Being the hour six o'clock, I call the Monday, May tenth Oxford School Committee Meeting to Order. Roll call attendance, Mrs. Forbes?
Here.
Mrs. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Canacchioli?
Here.
And myself, Daniel Coonan Chairman is here as well. Reading into the record, pursuant to Governor's Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL Chapter thirty-eight subsection eighteen. In the governor's order concerning imposing strict limitations on number of people that may gather in one place, meetings in town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link or number to call in or the similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate same despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings. For individuals who wish to participate remotely, please dial one six four six five five eight eight six five six and enter pin eight three seven four one two nine seven three eight five. Or join the meeting via the link on the town's website, school's website being pass code six zero seven one five one. The call meeting order, our first order of business tonight, do we have a report from our Ashley McGowan, are you here with us this evening? Ashley? Will hold and come back?
Hello, sorry, just let me in.
Okay, good evening, Ashley.
Good evening. So for my updates today, teacher appreciation week went well at the high school last week. The weekend ended with pairs of teacher friends competing to see which group knew each other the best and the whole school got to watch. That was really fun. Our last week of the year had participation from all grades and some teachers. The NHS inducted our new members during a ceremony that was streamed live on the day students returned full in person. And finally, student council will be transitioning to a new group of officers this week. So this will be my last report and I'd just like to thank you for inviting inviting me this year to share my updates.
Thank you, Ashley. It was our pleasure and we wish you well in the future. Can we ask what next year brings for you?
Um, I'll be going to college in Pittsburgh to Point Park University and I'll double major in dance and secondary math education.
Wonderful, Ashley. Congratulations. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Good luck, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Uh, next quick order of business, we have the minutes of the meeting from April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. All members were present. I'll obtain a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
And I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded discussion. Being not all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
But the record show five in affirmative and minutes to pass. Thank you. At this stage, I'll turn the gavel over to Vice Chairman Dave Canacchioli. Um, in doing so, I do want to express, our first candidate is here, I do want to express extreme, extreme thanks and gratitude for Mr. Burke, Mr. Canacchioli. Along with Dr. Randall Collins, we started this process back in November. It was a very long process. They they vetted so many candidates' resumes in front of us tonight. We're gonna have two wonderful applicants. And Mr. Dean Packard's here and our second applicant, Mr. Michael Lucas, he'll be joining about fifteen minutes later. So thank you for everyone that participated in the process. Uh, the outreach has been phenomenal of so many people calling. And I I've been involved in a lot of ones, both this side and the town manager's side. I've never had this much outreach from people coming in and people are very, very happy with the choices that we have. But Mr. Canacchioli, what's your meeting order?
Yeah, I also want to thank Randy from NEDSDEC, but I'm gonna turn it over to Cory. I want to thank him as well. Cory will kind of outline to Mr. Packard of what what's gonna happen right now.
Good. Dean, good to see you. So our goal for tonight is really to hear from you. Uh, we'd like to hear a little bit about your visit to Oxford, kind of your impressions and what you saw and what your experience was like. Uh, then we'll open it up and see if there are any follow-up questions from the committee. I know we've spoken to you at length as well as members of your your district. Um, so there may or may not be follow-up. Um, and after that, we're gonna give you an opportunity for just a closing statement.
Sure, fantastic. May I remove the mask?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Um, first and foremost, um, it's an honor and a privilege to be here tonight. I I know the vetting process that you guys had to go through and I know how hard it is in the time that it takes to to get to this level. So thank you very much for even considering me being here. Um, my experience of coming to Oxford last Monday was outstanding. I had a great opportunity to come in and meet with Dr. Nash and the central office staff and from there, um, I had an opportunity to go to all the schools. As I walked through the schools with the principals, it was very clear for me to be able to understand the passion in their voice. Uh, more importantly, to see the culture within their buildings, especially when I was talking to teachers and students and how much pride is embedded in everything that goes on here. Um, I I am a middle guy from the beginning to the end. I love the middle school, so obviously I know the middle school kids really well. So it was really unique to be able to spend some time up at the high school, but even more unique to spend time down at the elementary schools and watch the magic in the eyes of those kids who are just enjoying the process of learning and starting to learn about what learning is all about. And uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't say the the enthusiasm of the teachers that I had an opportunity to speak with also. Um, just just reminded me of why we do what we do and everything that we do is all about kids. So, um, I did also have an opportunity to meet with all the assistant principals. We had a great conversation over lunch. Um, I remember the days of being an assistant principal and how important they are to find your place in the niche of what you do. But more importantly, to understand that the journey is just starting for most of them and that their futures are are gonna be pretty bright as long as they stay consistent with what goes on. Um, from there, obviously I had an opportunity to uh, meet with Dr. Nash again and speak uh, and speak to her here, but I also had a chance to speak with teachers throughout the district. Um, I had an opportunity to speak to individuals within the community and uh, those conversations were were great. I mean, it's it's what we do. It's who we are. It's what we're all about. Our job is connecting bridges. Our job is to empower people and our job is to ensure that we lead by example. And um, I got a great feeling from the opportunity to speak with all of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you you mentioned your love of middle school. I know that's your experience there, you know, I know I have experience at one level myself too. So the, I'll ask you the question I think I asked you in the very first round is, how do you, how do you then convince our elementary admin and staff and our high school admin and staff that that you're the guy that?
Sure. That's a great question. I spent my first ten years in the classroom at Shepherd Hill Regional High School teaching. I was a high school basketball coach for twelve years. So I get high school, elementary school. We spend a lot of time transitionally talking about programs, uh, kids, uh, needs. Um, and we, I spend more time at the Heritage School and the Elementary School in Charlton, so I understand what that development looks like, um, and the progress that is included within the growth. Um, I understand the teachers' needs. Um, programmatic, programs are systematic. They start from kindergarten and work their way through, so I have a vast understanding about what that looks like. And again, then we're in the business of just ensuring that we have kids uh, able to connect the dots and have the most experiences that they can have as they gravitate through their their years. Um, so I've had a little flavor of all levels, which is outstanding. Um, but again, we're not, I'm not cornered just to the middle level. I I fell in love with the middle level after being in the high school for a long time, but there's nothing better than being in the elementary schools, watching the kids just aspire to be like the older kids. That's where it all starts. That's where the journey begins. And that's where our job as leaders is just to to continue to to look at that and see ways that we can foster that and make that better and better for them.
Anyone else?
I just, if I could, um, I wanted to compliment you on our Q and A the first night. It was a little bit of technical difficulty, but you really uh, did a great job. You, you know, ended up kind of being a one-man show without any questions and I'm sure that was difficult for you. Um, just looking back on that, anything that you wish you had said or anything you wanted to add?
Um, no, I actually, yeah, I mean, the life story goes on for a long time, but you know, the the thing I, the biggest thing is, as a leader, I've been doing it for now seventeen years. Is that it's not so much the leadership stuff, it's the person behind the leader that matters. Um, and if people know who I am and what I'm all about, I'm the type of person who's always approachable. I'm the type of person who's gonna be there for anything, anyone, and anyone. Uh, I've learned to empower, I've learned to celebrate, I've learned to support. Those things are just super important to me because leaders, that's a badge. Being a leader, that's a badge. The person behind a leader is everything. So thank you for bringing that up. And I don't think I said that that night, quite frankly, because I was rumbling through other things, like I was doing some sort of show and unlock the middle. So I have, I had an opportunity to do that quite a bit, but again, the, any leader themselves is only good, as good as the people around them and the people they empower to become better and challenged to become better. So it's one of the things I prided myself on and uh, it's something that I look forward to within my leadership realm as I continue to grow and I continue to become better.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate the site visit. It was fantastic getting to hear from the the students and parents and the community members alike. It was a wonderful opportunity and the tour of your building. It was very, you know, eye-opening to see all the programs that you have in place and the things that you're doing for your students. So I appreciate you giving us.
Thank you. I'm blessed. I mean, I I've got a great faculty and I've got tremendous kids and I've got tremendous community behind me. And uh, it becomes surreal when you start looking at potentially moving in other directions in education, having those conversations and, you know, you have those deep rooted connections. And again, in leadership, that's what we do. Regardless of where we are or where we go, we're always looking to make those connections. So thank you. I I appreciate that.
Okay. I'm not showing my mic, so I'll bet. Um, so when you talked with all the stakeholders on your visit to Oxford, is there anything that stuck out as concerns from, at any level? Whether it was a student, teacher, admin, or parent level, anything that you heard um, from the group?
So so concerns, I mean, the the time that I had with the principals obviously didn't give me enough time to dig deeply into the things that might be concerning. I focus on the positives. I've always focused on positives because I believe that those are the things that drive us during our challenging times. I think in any organization, you're gonna find there are pitfalls and there are areas of improvement. And I think that comes, you know, you get to those levels of understanding through collegial discussion, um, sitting at a roundtable and understanding that, you know, every decision we make is for the best interest of kids. Um, to give them experiences that they, you know, that continue to grow. Um, so to to answer your question directly for areas of concern, I don't think I had enough time to be able to do that. And part of my entry plan that I that I provided and to the three Ls, um, first of, first of all, you listen, then you learn, and then you lead. And in any leader that's worth what they do, that's the way they go. Because when you have that paradigm shift from building-based management of a principal to organizational-based management of a superintendent, there's a shift, there's a difference. And I think people look at you to be the person who's calm, to be the person who, that they can come to, that they can, uh, that you can challenge, but then you can support and then help them become better, then celebrate the heck out of what they do. It's what great leaders do all the time. It's what great coaches do.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add in your closing statement you'd like to make?
Sure, you know, this whole process has been really self-reflective for me and um, you know, I've been in the same place for twenty-seven, twenty-eight years at this point in time, so I know what I know and I know it pretty well. Uh, but stepping out of that comfort zone and seeing what you can potentially bring to help out another organization is truly exciting. I'm at the part, the part in my career where I have eight to ten years left. It's that final chapter. It's that opportunity to be able to give beyond the level that you're giving now and really support and make something special for somebody else. Um, you know, my focus, you know, if I'm the successful candidate, obviously, is is going to really build that bridge with the community members from an organizational standpoint, to build that bridge with school committee, to ensure that there's a strong vision moving forward that supports all learners. Um, to challenge, support, and empower the administrators to take risks beyond what they've taken before, to see the possible results that they could get from doing so. Uh, to make sure teachers have the tools to be successful in their hands, to help kids uh, each and every single day. Uh, to make sure that all students have equity or access to programming, uh, to be able to just flourish, to be who they're going to be. Um, and more importantly, to continue to thump that drum, to see what the future is gonna hold for education. That excites me. That's, that's what real leaders do. We don't sit complacent at all. We look to see what tomorrow's gonna bring. But at the same time, support and celebrate and really build up the people around you. So that's where I'm at. That's who I am. That's what I'm all about. And you know, like I said, I'm honored and excited to be here, but I'm also honored and excited to potentially be part of the next chapter of growth.
Thank you, Dean. I know this is a lot of work on your end too, to get to this point, so we appreciate everything you've done and like hell said, the visit you set up for us was was tremendous.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. I appreciate all the time and efforts, guys.
Thanks, Dean.
You're welcome. Have a great night, everybody.
You too.
So for those of you watching, we're just waiting for the next candidate, Mike Lucas, to be brought in, so it'll be a short pause here. We're not leaving, but just a silence until the next candidate. It's it's on now.
It is, yeah. Is it off now?
No.
How about now?
No.
Is that on now?
Yeah.
You need guys? Good. What are you doing?
Mr. Lucas, just in terms of public disclosure.
Yep.
Uh, as I have noted in the past before, my wife currently works in a position under Mr. Lucas at Tantascro Regional High School. And I have worked with him about thirty years ago as well, but I won't be participating in the process. And with that, with this disclosure, I can also remain fair and impartial in my vote this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Coonan, for that. Welcome, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you. Thank you for having me back again.
Yeah, great. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Burke. He's gonna kind of explain to you what the next few minutes are gonna look like.
Okay, terrific.
Welcome, Mike.
Welcome, thanks. Hey Cory.
So our goal tonight, uh, really is to hear from you first, hear a little bit about your visit to Oxford, what your impressions were, how that experience went.
Uh, we'll give some time if there's any follow-up questions from the committee, even though we probably asked you a thousand questions to this point already. Yeah, a lot, a lot, yes. But I understand why you're being thorough, so.
Excellent. And then we'll, we'll give you an opportunity for kind of a closing statement at the end.
Okay, terrific. All right, thank you very much. All right, so if you want to start and just tell us a little bit about your visit.
I really enjoyed the visit. Um, had a great chat with Dr. Nash in the morning. We we had dinner together later. Obviously has a, has a great idea of the landscape of the school community, has invested her own time in it. Um, whoever gets this position is gonna be very fortunate to have her to work with your transition. I would welcome that opportunity. There's a lot I could learn from Dr. Nash. Um, her experience is pretty amazing in the state. Um, so that was great. I I got to meet with central office. You've got a lot of dedicated people who are expert in their fields, who have a passion for what they're doing. From central office through every school I visited, clearly that folks want to see stability in the in the superintendent position. I got a feeling from you and from parents, I admit, that that's the same thing across the district. Um, I would love to be the person that gets to stabilize this. I'm not looking to hop and move. I said that in my opening interview. I'll say it again tonight. I'd like to go somewhere for a while and make a, and make a difference in the school system. I think Oxford's a great fit. Um, I loved, it's been COVID, so we have kids, uh, we've never seen more anxiety. It was great. In every single school I walked through, the kids felt welcomed. You could see they were comfortable in their skin there. Um, teachers had good relationships with kids. There was good engagement with kids. It was nice to walk the halls. Um, it was great professional development regardless of what happens tonight. To walk through every one of your classrooms and floors in one day was pretty daunting, but also amazing. It was exhausting at the end, but it was awesome. So it was a great experience. Um, the elementary schools, uh, they're engaged, having fun, active, up moving around. It's wonderful to see kids feel so wanting to be in school and not want to miss something, especially over the past year what we've been through with children. So that was really nice to see that everywhere. Um, in a lot of good discussions with with staff and questions, um, again, stability kept coming up a position. A lot of people seem very dedicated to their craft. Want to make a difference with kids, want to be here working with kids, um, and just want to feel supported, um, and and have a team behind them that's consistent. Um, and I think that's something I can offer. It was also interesting from the beginning and every school I went through was the question about how do we get kids that are in Oxford to stay in Oxford and not go to other public schools? Um, at Tantascro, we have a vocational program. We're very proud of that program. It's great. For some kids, it's the best thing for them. So not necessarily talking about Bay Path as an option for kids, but how do we prevent Oxford kids from going to other public schools like ourselves in neighboring towns that don't have vocational programs, but kids are leaving? In my discussions with parents, alumni, staff, there's a lot of pride here in Oxford. It's, it's, there's no question. How do we bottle that? How do we show what these good things our schools are doing so that in our community it has a stronger effect? And that parents don't want to send their kids to another public school because they believe they offer something they don't. Are there opportunities for us at times financially with budgets and S R money to create some things that we offer to our community that maybe we don't have right now that would keep more kids here at Oxford? Um, I think we need somebody that's gonna unite people and galvanize the district together. Um, and I hope, hope you believe that's, that's me as a person. So I have a long history of building relationships in my community with my staff, my students. You guys get to meet them. I'm very proud of that and with my school committee. Um, and I would love to come to Oxford and do that. Um, there's also some opportunities in walking the buildings and talking to staff about curriculum alignment vertically, pre-K through twelve, but also horizontally within groups of teachers. Um, so there's commonality of what's happening in classrooms with curriculum and skills and what kids are getting regardless of what teacher they get. So it's the same across the board, whether it's third grade or tenth grade, so we can guarantee that every child by the time they get to high school or beyond has those same skills and that there's some curriculum similarities across the board, um, and that your important standards are being hit. Um, I thought that was great. So it was wonderful to walk the halls. I had a great visit. It was a great experience. Um, I would love to do it again. I think it reemphasized for me how important it is as a superintendent, you know, I said ideally I'd love to get in the classrooms twice a week. That's hard to do as a superintendent. There's a lot to do. Um, but I think I would definitely commit myself to being once a week. It also rejuvenates you. Whenever I walk my own building, it rejuvenates you to see what's happening in the classroom and it refocuses you on why we're doing this. We're doing all this so these kids have a great future. Um, and really start the discussion this summer. I would love to jump in right away and start the discussion with the community. What do we want for our kids right now in schools? What do we want them to leave with when they graduate? And whatever we're doing now, how does that impact what is best for children? So I think if you focus on those things and you kind of unite people and are positive and build relationships, you really, I think Oxford has tremendous potential going forward, no question. So, visit was terrific. Great experience. I hope that was enough.
Yeah, beautiful. Thank you. Actually answered my question in your, in your statement. So I'm gonna see if anyone else has any questions on the board. Yes.
Um, I just wanted to say I spent a lot of time with you and around you and hearing about you, so I just wanted to thank you for all the time that you've put into this.
Thank you.
And all of the questions that you've answered well eloquently. I've heard great things from students and staff of your current school, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, and I appreciate all your time.
Thank you. It's been a great growth experience no matter what you guys decide to do, so it's been terrific.
And I just want to say I appreciate the site visit. It was fantastic to meet with your, your students and the parents and community and key stakeholders. And and the tour that you gave us was outstanding, just to see the kids in their element.
Yeah.
And you naturally in that element with them, I mean.
Yeah.
That spoke volumes.
Yeah, we enjoyed it too. Thank you. It was great to have you guys there. It was terrific.
Thank you for that opportunity.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, um, so when you did your, you know, tour through Oxford, is there anything that kind of stuck with you from any of the stakeholders about things that, I don't want to use, I used the word concerns last time, but anything that stuck out with you, like, I gotta make a mental note of this. This person said, concern, I guess concern is the word I'm looking for. Is there anything that you heard from stakeholders about concerns? Moving forward with our district and something that maybe kind of stuck with you?
Nothing specifically, um, just the themes that I just went over. I heard several times in different buildings from different people. Um, nothing that's a glaring concern. Again, I think there's a lot of good things happening here. I think as we talk about, you know, at our school, it's, oh, there's always opportunities for improvement. Um, my history at Tantascro the last twelve years, I've, I've feel like I've got a lot of accomplishments. You all, you know them, you have my resume. But I can't take credit for all of them. My personality is to build relationships and be a facilitator and allow people to do great things. Um, don't get me wrong, I can be the nicest guy in the room, but I also expect people to have high standards of professionalism and to do what's best for kids. And sometimes that means you make tough decisions. Um, so I'm, I'm ready to do both. I've done that at Tantascro. I'm ready to bring that to Oxford if that's the opportunity. Um, again, I think there's some opportunity. We always talk about, there's always, as, as the world's changing, COVID has happened and we're gonna have more kids with anxiety. How do we make sure K through twelve that we are doing some good S E L work? Do we have trauma-informed teachers? Do we need professional development around that? Um, culture responsive teaching, things like that. Basically, how do we understand children, where they are, their history and what their needs are, and then make sure we apply the content to their needs? Um, whether it's special ed, whatever it is, um, I think is really, really important. So I saw little gaps of that in my walkthroughs, but it was only a snapshot, so it wouldn't be fair to make a judgment. Um, but overall, I saw a lot of good things when I walked through and a lot of enthusiasm for your faculty that's here and really being with kids. And it was the relationship of seeing the kids in the Oxford schools, in every single school, comfortable with their teachers, talking to their teachers, asking questions, not afraid to participate, was really a great thing to see for your community. So I think there should be a lot of, a lot of pride in that also.
Excellent, thank you.
Lot of good stuff going on and places for improvement.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So Mike, anything you want to add? Any closing statement you want to make as we wrap up our process here?
I think I gave part of it already, but.
Sure.
I couldn't wait. Um, you know, again, I think, I, I hope you got a good idea of of who I am and what I am when you visited in our Zoom meetings. Whether you talked to parents, my students, the school committee member, um, that is who I am. And if that's what you guys want for your school system, I would love to bring my heart here and my effort and try to do whatever I can for for Oxford and schools. I think it's, I felt like it was a good fit interviewing with you guys, talking to people. Obviously, it's, Tantascro is not far away. Um, so there's a lot of people that work there and families and it's really not far. As I got into the process, I felt more and more that it was a good match. Um, after visiting, I really want to be your superintendent. Um, I think it's a great fit. Um, I think you need a positive person who's gonna unite this community and build relationships with all the stakeholders, and that's what I'm good at, um, in facilitating that. So I hope that's in the end what you vote for tonight. So I'd love the opportunity.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate it.
All right, you're letting me off easy tonight.
That was it.
And I just, can I thank Helen? She was awesome. Helen, whoever gets this is gonna be great to, get very lucky to work with you. So she held my hand through both community meetings last time. It was great. So thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right, thank you, Beth.
Take care, Mike.
Okay, we thank both candidates. I, I really do thank the committee for the hours and hours of work, the due diligence, asking tough questions, making the phone calls, and then following up as to what was, was your best candidate. So I did speak with each candidate before this evening, um, not, not, obviously they make up their mind on their own. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass down a piece of paper and the candidate, and the each school committee member will just write down a name. I'll tabulate it. And I will announce with the motion of, of where the, the committee is in terms of their number one intention for school committee, for superintendent schools.
You're gonna come to me? Thank you.
There's no drum roll. I'll give a direct cut right to the shape. With the, I'm just trying to make sure I got. The votes tabulating four, votes for Michael Lucas, one for Dean Packard. I would entertain a motion to enter negotiations with Mike Lucas for the position of Oxford Superintendent of Schools.
I'd like to make that motion.
All right, we'll second that.
Moved and seconded discussion. Any, any discussion on this? Okay. Roll call vote, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Canacchioli?
Yes.
And Mr. Coonan votes yes as well. Five, record show five in affirmative, and we'll enter into negotiations with Mr. Lucas. As part of that, as, you know, this is, this is my last meeting, so on the next motion would be motion to allow Mr. Canacchioli, our sitting vice chairman, to begin negotiations on behalf of the school committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion. Roll call vote, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Canacchioli?
Yes.
And Mr. Coonan votes yes as well. Okay, thank you. And tonight, we will, we will, after this meeting, be going into an executive session under that to start laying out with the committee, uh, with the order, with the marching orders from the committee up to Mr. Canacchioli and laying out the negotiations, the contract. All right, subcommittee study groups. Now, we think that, we thank your committee again, gentlemen, for that we've done through. You still to do? Anything for us?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Nash?
Nothing to report this evening.
Excellent, thank you. And Mrs. Griffin, do you have a warrant for us?
I do have a warrant.
Warrant report.
So I have a warrant report for this evening, May tenth, twenty twenty-one. I signed a payroll warrant dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one for five hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-three cents. An account payable, uh, payable warrant dated May fourth, twenty twenty-one for eighty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-three cents. And an accounts payable warrant dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-one for seventy-eight thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents.
Thank you. Do you want to continue before, before the child is said this time ago?
Yes, so we did have a subcommittee, um, meeting for, uh, curriculum. Yes, so we did have a subcommittee meeting for curriculum and dated that happened, I'm trying to remember, was it Wednesday or last Wednesday? Everything's a blur. Every day that I make through another milestone, because this baby was due on Thursday of last week. Yeah, so my mind is like.
Happy to be here tonight.
I'm just like, can I still make it to the next meeting? And I have, so that's fantastic. But we had an outstanding meeting with key stakeholders in the district about the literacy curriculum, and I'm sure Cory can speak more eloquently than I can about it, but you can see the investment, and Tara Trainer did a fantastic job explaining to all of us the process that what they went through to select the curriculum and showed us the real data across, you know, each grade level. And, you know, today we had, this evening, we had candidates that spoke about that vertical and horizontal alignment, and you can see that the curriculum that was proposed is a great match to get us there, and so I'm very excited. And we did make a motion to approve, to bring that to you folks, probably at the next meeting. Twenty-fourth. Yeah, the 24th, and it's good stuff, so I can't wait. I don't know if you want to piggyback off of that.
Looking forward to it, too.
Yeah, so that was, that's the only update. We didn't have a policy subcommittee meeting that was supposed to happen before. I think I already updated the committee about that last time, so we'll have another one coming up. But that's us.
Thank you, Coach. All right, so I'm going to echo the thanks to Mr. Canacchioli and Mr. Burke, as well as the subcommittee that worked on this amazing, in-depth, fairly seamless process that brought forth two amazing candidates. We were in a win-win situation, which felt really good. So, that was a lot of your work. I appreciate. Ashley, I want to say congratulations on your future endeavors and also thank you for everything you've brought forward for us. Sounds like the student council at Oxford High is doing a great job. Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to shout out all of our educators. You're underappreciated, but we love you and we appreciate you every day, even though you don't always know that, and I'm sorry for those days. Congratulations to the new members of the National Honor Society and also, I believe, the NJHS wasn't mentioned, but I think they are having or just had a virtual having.
What's the date, Amy, of that? Coming up.
I know that their letters had gone out, so I want to congratulate those students in advance as well, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
I hate to sound repetitive, but we have to thank the folks that helped us on this committee, and Dave and I certainly did not do this ourselves. We had a tremendous group from the very beginning, the subcommittee that got together, a lot of people who gave of their time, and we got a lot of great feedback from our administration, from the staff, and the folks that did the community forum, so we appreciate that. And obviously, on your last meeting here tonight, Dan, I want to thank you for all your service that you've given the town of Oxford, not only in this position, but in other positions. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, a few things here. First of all, congratulations, Ashley. It doesn't surprise me that you're going to be a double major. I remember your seventh-grade recognition day. I think Ms. Bellum would remember. We just kept handing you award after award after award, so it doesn't surprise me. So, congratulations and good luck to you, and thanks for all you did for us this year. To Cory's point, thanks to Dr. Collins and to Cory. You know, it was great working with you guys on this committee and also to the subcommittee members and Mr. Nugent's in the audience, and we appreciate everybody's help and support. I want to thank Dean Packard for going through the process. I think he did a great job. I mean, I think when you're hiring the next educational leader of a district, it's a good problem to have, to have two great candidates, and I think he was a great candidate. I'm pretty sure the Charlton Middle School community is probably very happy, so it's bittersweet that they don't have to lose their amazing principal, so thanks, Dean, and congratulations to Mike Lucas. Really look forward to working with you, Mike, so congratulations. A quick request through the chair, if we could get that school choice data through the, to the, from the superintendent?
Yeah, we have it for the next meeting.
Oh, okay, for the next meeting? Okay, perfect. Yep, I just.
We do.
Yep, excellent. Thank you. And finally, as Cory had mentioned, Dan, this is your last meeting, so I was looking for some data, some things about you and the town, so I got to ask you, of numbers less than 10, but not zero, what's your favorite number? Less than 10, but not zero, so a single-digit number. Do you have a favorite number?
Number seven.
Ooh, okay, so that breaks my theory. So, Dan was a selectman for nine years. He was a school committee member for nine years. He was also involved in five other committees and commissions since 1999. So, Dan has done a lot within the town. I met him, I think his oldest daughter, Taylor, was a seventh or eighth grader. I think that's when I first met Dan, and he said to me, I was the assistant principal at the middle school, and he said, "Good luck, Dave. Good luck dealing with her." And her and I get along great, so.
Taylor's watching, aren't you?
Yeah, Taylor, you were great. And so, that's where I first really met Dan and, you know, our history here on the committee the last couple of years. So, you know, we want to thank you for your commitment to the district and to the town. Thanks for your leadership on this board. I know I personally have learned a lot from you, how to run meetings and how to be the chair and how to be just a solid member of the committee, so I appreciate that. On behalf of all of us here at this table, our current members, past members, all the stakeholders within this district and within the town, thanks again. Enjoy your retirement from public office. Who knows, though, Dan? Maybe we'll see your name on the ballot in some capacity soon, someday. Something tells me this isn't the last of Dan Coonan. I think we're going to see him somewhere else. So, on behalf of the district, Mr. Coonan, thank you for your service.
Thank you. In going through this, Mr. Canacchioli, you hit it right. Yes, I have moved around, and I've always been one, as I said before. I did nine years municipal government. I did nine years here. The next arena that I enter, I'm not sure. I'm really not, wherever my heart is, wherever my family, my health, it brings me in that direction. I did my first three terms with the selectmen, and in between, and before that, I was always, always fascinated with government. Fascinating, and I have been forever a public servant, and I believe I, the picture in dictionary could advise what a public servant is. You don't look for these accolades. You don't do it for the money. You do it because you give back to this community that has given me so much in my family over and over and over the years. We have roots, probably well over 200 years in this town. We love Oxford. You know, it's the only place I ever wanted to live, I ever wanted to serve, but I did not, I did not want to work in the community. There's going to be some sort of separation, where I graduated here class of 1985, back to my public service, yes, I was also captain of football team two years. But through that time, and then I went on to Springfield and I pursued sports management, and I said, "I just want to coach. I want to be able to give back. I want to be able to work for the public, to be able to stay out of the spotlight, but make sure the spotlight shines, like I look out here tonight, on the incredible administrators of the people that run this town all the way across, including my board members." I've worked with good board members and bad board members over the years. This ranks, this board ranks as one of probably, well, 18 boards, and sometimes a little crossover. It's definitely in the top five. You know, it's top five because you see the passion. You don't see yes, yes, yes down the line. When I spoke over the, throughout the past week about the process that we were going to enter into making the final recommendation, I heard incredible stories, just people that are willing to communicate. This board is a very good communicated board, that they talk, they share information. I've been on boards that's been one-up each other or dismiss what this person said, they don't know what they're talking about, or even worse, can you explain what you mean by that? Because I don't think you really know what that means with a personal text. Politics is never, ever personal. Once you start making it personal, you're in it for the wrong reasons. So, again, the next arena I pop up in, I'm sure it'll be somewhere. I don't know. I don't know. I'll take some time off again. And again, back to term limits, this is a job, if you like to run your mouth, which I was never a mouth runner, come here, sit in the seat, sit in the hot seat, do the homework that these people do. And we saw it tonight with the vetting of two great candidates in front of us. You just don't, you don't come in and draw up a scheme out of basically off of a box with a weedy's box top. You come in this year prepared, your notes, no matter what it be, that is a knowledge in that you're not calling the superintendent or calling Helen every three minutes because you can't find a decision by yourself.